It's five o'clock on Wednesday, September 17th. This is a special meeting of the Logan'sport Common Council. This meeting has been called to consider one ordinance, that's Ordinance 201441. We'll follow our usual and normal routine, follow our same agenda. Meeting's been called to order, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jeremy Ashcraft.
Here.
Bob Bishop.
Here.
Joe Buck.
Here.
Gary Fox.
Here.
Charlie Heast.
Here.
Chuck Lindell.
Present.
Teresa Popejoy.
Present.
All members are present and accounted for, there are no minutes for consideration at this meeting. There are going to be no comments of the mayor. Are there any petitions or comments of citizens?
Mercedes Brew, 1315 East Market Street. One of the things that has come out of this power plant project for me is that I have learned a new term, sunk cost fallacy. Sunk cost is a cost that has already occurred, a cost that you are not guaranteed that you will ever get back. Sunk cost fallacy means the mistake that people often make when they are making a decision, they make the mistake of deciding something in the hope of recovering their sunk cost. Here's a common sense example. An engaged woman begins to doubt that she should get married, but since she has accepted the engagement ring, she goes through with the wedding so that she doesn't waste the value of the ring. That's not logical, of course. That is the sunk cost fallacy. She is allowing the sunk cost, the engagement ring that has been bought in the past, to affect her decision today. The analogy works for us. We're getting ready to marry, make a deal with, someone we don't even know. And what's even worse, we bought our own engagement ring. That is the money and time that has been spent on the power plant project. That is our sunk cost. Call it off, vote no. It is not logical, it is a fallacy, to vote for the development agreement today in the hope of recovering those sunk costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercedes. Are there any more petitions or comments of citizens?
I'm a citizen of this city, and I address the members of the Common Council who are going to vote in favor of this, these two documents, the development agreement and the, our purchase agreement.
Jim, for the record, could you state your address and your name?
Sure. If I'd have been permitted to complete the sentence, that was the next part. My name is Jim, my name is Brew. I live at 1315 East Market, and I've appeared in front of you many times in opposition to this project, beginning in the winter of '12, early '13, after the requests for proposals had been advertised. One reason to vote against this project is that at least one, if not two million dollars of city money has been spent on consultants and lawyers by the mayor. Despite numerous requests for the mayor to do an accounting, he has not, nor have you. At your last meeting, I reviewed your 1.5 million dollars in fund authorizations, and I think, as a financial local body, you have a duty to figure out where your money, my money, our money went. It's irresponsible not to account for the citizens' money. Second, this contract is not limited to 25 years. It is without term. There's ambiguity when you compare the different parts of the contract, and I'm talking about both the PPA and the DA. There's only an option for the city, with proper notice, in the 25th year, to decide if the city wants to own a standalone facility for part of what presumably would be a larger It is unprecedented in the history of this city for such a contract to be entered into. I look forward to anybody who studies local history to correct the statement I just made. Under the miscellaneous section of the DA, you also say that nobody in the future of the city can change your ordinance. Section 6.2, page 13. I'm sorry, 10.2, page 17. That also is without precedent in the history of this city. The Service Board passed this, just as you will, with no discussion. And to take such action with such historical consequences is a bother to a person who studies history and thinks about how a community is affected. Nobody does business with an unknown partner. I see where your local ordinance for this evening refers to the entity Logan'sport Energy Group, formerly known as TCS. Neither entity exists or has existed. For sure, the entity who's the seller, LMU being the buyer, by these two documents, is a limited liability company. And anybody who ever studies any bit of law, even a little bit that some people think they've learned by being involved in this project, the first thing you learn in the first year of law school is you limit the liability if you can for a corporate entity, and that's how the whole idea of LLCs got created. And so if you're going to do business with an LLC, you want to know the nature of the limitation. How deep is the pocket, is the popular way to say it, and you don't know. Why would you do business, I don't want to say it rhetorically, you should not do business with someone whose solvency is unknown to you. You know what, you're calling this a franchise fee, it's 1.7 million, it's not trying to make up for the money that's already been wasted. If there is a true seller out there, referred to as a French entity, never showed their face, never proved their corporate existence, the question is, how solvent is that entity? And who is this secret seller? What they're buying with the 1.7 million, if they sign, usually as a buyer, you would wait for the seller to sign the document, then examine it, and then the buyer adds the buyer's signature. The 1.7 million locks in the sale of LMU's service area. You can go online, or you can go to Indianapolis, to the Regulatory Commission, and look at a map. And Indiana is divided up into monopolies, just like middle-aged fiefdoms. And LMU is the owner and controller and responsible for service in its service area. And the way this contract reads, LMU buys all, all of its power from this seller. And the only way that anybody would be interested in dealing with little old Logan'sport and little old LMU is if there was something so valuable as an exclusive monopoly of the service area. So, just if I were you, I would think probably you've done some mathematics, you've probably had some economist do a study over at least 25 or 50 years, what is the exclusivity, from a profit point of view, worth to own that service area? I don't think you've done that. Just picking one thing out of the contracts, some people, including on the Service Board, take comfort in the belief that there will be several years of surety, like an insurance I've never seen a situation where a person in Logan'sport's position was not involved in the negotiation of the surety. The way these contracts are written totally leaves the creation of the surety in the hands of the developer. There's no negotiation, and you don't have a power unless it's spelled out in these two documents in combination. Logan'sport has no right to negotiate the surety. The surety should relate to a calculation that you do as to what your costs are going to be when this entity does not supply you with the power that you need. There is no documentation, I mean, this document, after all we've been through, that you still would write a contract that says it's okay to burn trash is illogical to me. We have two board-certified physicians who have testified in this community about the harmful effects specifically of trash burning on the citizens who live in the community where such generation facility is constructed. And the way these documents are written, you, the city, are simply leaving that serious decision up to some stranger. A couple concluding remarks. You know, these, these little charts, it's easy to make up a chart. In studying what's happened to other cities, one of the lessons that I learned from the, a study by the State of Pennsylvania's Legislature about how can a city avoid the mess it got into, is, the rule of thumb is, examine the presumptions. Here's a presumption, 5.3 cents per kilowatt hour. Where is a rate study? Anybody who studied rates 101 knows that you have to be able to know the cost of the fuel, figure for variations, save some money for keeping equipment and your transmission lines in order. There's a standard way to look at rates. There is no rate study to support this idea. Now, your ordinance goes back and says, well, here's a list of six things, it's like a grocery store list. LMU capability to purchase power at a cost less than 5.5 cents per kilowatt hour. If you go back to the original idea, it was four and a half to five and a half. Anyway, you're trying to tuck yourself back on the original RFP, and now you say, well, what if we can accomplish one or more of these ideas? The wheels have fallen off of any kind of an effort to plan for the future generation of electricity in this community. There is no rate study. With regard to jobs and money, the only people who have gotten a job out of this after a million-plus dollars are consultants and lawyers. Some of you I know have made a good living based upon union wages. I've been a union organizer and a union-paid worker in my history before I ever became a lawyer. And I don't expect a single motion to be made to amend any of this because you've just accepted it. But I've written about this before, and I won't go on at length, I just conclude with This power plant should be built by union labor. I've read development agreements that say that. Okay, let's say that you listen to Mr. Dilling in the back of the room, and he's not in favor of unions, that's, and I don't begrudge him a penny that he's made in his life, I'm just saying, he's made it by not paying unions, having unions. So why not at least amend your ordinance to say prevailing wage is to be paid to the construction workers? If this were a competitively bid contract, because it was a public work, you would have to pay competitive wage. And Mr. Bosma, a friend of business in Indianapolis, up in our McHale Auditorium, remarked in an affirmative way that this would could be built, if it's built, could be built without paying the prevailing wage. That undermines the idea of organized labor. You might also legally consider at the 25-year point, if any of us are still alive then, if Logan'sport truly can become the owner of this facility, because then, and this is hypothetical, wouldn't it become a public work? And all public works can only be created according to competitive bidding, which this was not competitively bid, and if it was built at the prevailing wage, which is basically the union wage in the community. And the last point is, it's prudent to add, make a motion, amend this combination of ordinances so that a fixed percentage in the construction and operation of this power plant be paid to Logan'sport and Cass County suppliers and vendors. That's a social provision in a contract. I've seen it in other development agreements signed on to by other municipalities. Thank you for considering these comments.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Are there any more petitions or comments of citizens? Okay, hearing none. Are there any reports from committees, boards, or commissions? There's no old business, I'm sorry, under old business, there's Ordinance 201441 to be considered tonight, and I will call on Councilman Bishop to read Ordinance 201441.
Your Honor, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Ordinance 201441 on our second and final reading. Ordinance 201441, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, appropriating a development agreement as supplement to a certain power purchase agreement with the Logan'sport Energy Group LLC. Your Honor, I motion for the second and final vote on Ordinance 2014-41.
Second. Ordinance 201441 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I have a question. Are you prepared at this time to give us any more information about anyone who is considered the primary investors in this?
I'm sorry, I'm still held to the terms of the confidentiality agreement. Is there any more discussion regarding Ordinance 201441? Councilman Bishop.
Yeah, I have a statement to make. On July 24th, 2014, I attended a Utility Service Board meeting in which the LUTS daily engineering reported on options available to move away from coal-fired electric generation in Logan'sport. That report presented four options. Option A was to simply shut down the power point at the power plant and lay off the employees, purchase power, and at an estimated cost of 14 million, not including the cleanup existing facility. Option B, C, and D involve converting the natural gas to natural gas at a cost to rate payers of approximately 100 million dollars. I sat there as a councilman that had just been in office for less than six months, thinking Logan'sport was in big trouble. The cost of delivering electricity to our rate payers was already too high, and with the additional cost of bonding 100 million dollars, rates would have to go higher. Higher rates would cost more businesses to leave our community, and we would not be able to attract any new business. We simply had to come up with another option. Just a short time later, in 2012, I started hearing of a possibility of another option, refuge-derived fuel to electricity. On January 24th of 2013, the City Council and Utility Service Board had a joint executive session at the Columbia Club to be presented the finalists responding to the RFP to produce electricity from refuge-derived fuels. Pyrolyzer was my choice due to obvious efficiencies, and ultimately was selected as our next option to deliver electricity for less than 5.5 cents per kilowatt hour. We traveled to Germany and to Canada to see the technology firsthand. Since then, the developer's changed, but our goal of providing clean, affordable energy to our rate payers is not. In order to decide on whether to vote for or against this development agreement tonight, I sat down and made a list of the parts that I like and the parts that I don't. This is what I like. The taxpayers' entire investment of 1.75 million will be returned by March 31st, 2015. Taxpayers will not be responsible for any of the costs of this project. It will be 100% privately financed, 100% private money. Number two, LMU will be guaranteed a cost of 5.3 cents per kilowatt hour by January 1st, 2019. Our current wholesale cost is 7.32 cents per kilowatt hour. 5.3 cents is a 27.6% decrease from our current wholesale rate. My August bill was $100 at my home. If I reduced that by 27.6%, my bill would have been reduced to $72.40. That $27.60 cut in my bill in one month, that's, that's a significant amount, that's a good thing on its own. But number three, Logan'sport will receive 4% of the gross third-party sales with a guaranteed 5 million minimum a year. Our revenue from the first phase, the 500 megawatt, would be approximately 8.9 million dollars. And if the plant reaches its maximum output of 2,000 megawatt, our revenue could be as high as 70 million dollars a year. Logan'sport's 2014 budget was 10 million dollars approximately. Number four, Logan'sport retains our service carry rights and generating rights. We have not sold our rights. We not only retain, number five, we not only retain our rights, or our, our, our rights to, but we grow power, not only retain our jobs, but we grow power point, power plant jobs. The, number six, elimination of Logan'sport's cost of tipping fees to discard our municipal solid waste. Logan'sport will begin providing residential trash pickup, creating more jobs in Logan'sport, and the approximately 1 million dollars a year we now spend on trash disposal will remain in Logan'sport instead of going to the current vendor's community. Logan'sport can provide a more efficient and more reliable service to our residents. Number seven, our community will be, will experience an immediate economic development boost to our local economy. Construction of the plant will create an estimated 2,000 jobs, which will contribute to our local economy in sales, services, to the construction workers and parts suppliers. It's my opinion, number eight, and last number, it's in my opinion that with the extra revenue that this plant provides to Logan'sport, we will have the funds to rebuild our infrastructure without raising taxes. The projected long-term cost of unfunded federal-mandated stormwater separation fee is projected to be as high as 60 dollars per rate payer per month. Our current fee is 7 dollars and 47 cents a month. Stormwater fees can be completely eliminated. As for, as for what I don't like, this agreement is not everything that I wanted. I'm sure it's not everything the mayor or the developer wanted either. But when I look at the big picture compared to what our options were back in July of 2012, we have been blessed. To some, it may seem like we are moving too fast. To others, we're not moving fast enough. It take, it has taken over two years, thousands of miles traveled, and countless hours to get where we are here tonight. Even though I've personally spent many hours considering my decision on how to vote tonight, the decision is really not that difficult. If I vote no, the future of Logan'sport is at least questionable, at worst bleak. If I vote yes, Logan'sport has the opportunity to be a shining star in Indiana. With this new power plant, Logan'sport will have economic development tools that few cities have. We have, we, we can have the lowest-cost green energy in Indiana and beyond. Our future can be bright. It's for those reasons that I'm honored to be able to offer my support for Logan'sport's future and to vote yes on this agreement tonight. Even though there have been a handful of people that have been against this project from the beginning and will be to the end, there is overwhelming support from the majority of the citizens of our community. And last but not least, I want to thank Mayor Franklin, the entire rate stabilization team, both current and past, my fellow councilmen, and the community that has supported us during the challenging and historic time. I thank you all. I yield the floor.
Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, Your Honor, I have a couple things to say in regard to Councilman Bishop's statement. Number one, we all haven't traveled thousands of miles as a member of this council of seven. I was never invited or even knew about the trips to Germany or Canada or any other trip aside from the Columbia Club when we met with Mr. Canterbury and the Green USA Power Group. So, that's one thing that has led me to red-flag the integrity of the decision-making process as a group. I think that we all should have been in on the ground level, and there should be no information that should have been withheld. Number two, I've had to do my own digging and think I have tracked down some of the financiers of our program in which other council members have used their names with reverence of being inside, having inside information regarding the development of the financing of this project. Again, one of the seven sitting up here, which I shouldn't have had to do that work if that was something we were all considering. While I would absolutely love to see this project come to fruition for not only our community members, but for all of the employees at LMU, I still think there are an awful lot of unanswered questions and a lot of things that weren't done- lot of unanswered questions and a lot of things that weren't done above board and with the integrity that gives me the comfort to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. And Joe?
Yeah. Everything I've seen, I have not met the investors, I don't have an inside track, but the information I have at hand, the technology, it's current technology used throughout the world, not just the United States. The gas turbines are state-of-the-art. Everything I've seen is good. The problem we've had in Logan Sport is nobody's done anything for 25 years. The existing coal plant has spewed emissions that are way beyond EPA standards because they've done a lot of work to keep them within EPA standards, but that coal-burning standard is still questionable in my mind. This is natural gas. It's much cleaner. Like I say, the technology is current, and due to the fact that nobody's done anything for 25 years with the coal plant, we've had to breathe coal fumes. We're getting away from that. This is 38 megawatts would not supply the city anyway, and there's no way we could afford to do the emission control on that coal plant to keep it burning anyway. This is a golden opportunity for Logan Sport, and I look for great things to come with new power. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion among council?
I would just like to say that I truly hope that I'm wrong. I have a lot of doubts about this project. I think there are a lot of ifs, and I've spent a lot of time thinking about it. And I've talked to LMU board members, I've talked to fellow council members. This document's the only shot we've got of getting the 1.7 million dollars back. I'm sure it's not perfect. I've read it several times, and I'm sure there are things that I've missed. I'm sure there are things, as Councilman Bishop said, that the mayor doesn't like, that the developer doesn't like. But I also read it, and I can't help but think to myself, if we could do even handful of the things listed in this document, it would be good for Logan Sport. And as I said, I still have a lot of questions, a lot of doubts, and I still think there are too many ifs. I don't think there's anything certain about this project, but I also don't know at this point what our, what our real alternatives would be.
Any more discussion among council?
Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I've spent countless hours reviewing information, reading information, researching information, and anybody that thinks making a decision in this regard has been easy is sadly mistaken because this has not been an easy decision to make. Anyone that knows me knows that I'm a financial person, and when I don't see information related to finances, it's very difficult for me to support that. However, I have to say that if this comes to fruition, and I certainly hope it does come to fruition, if this comes to fruition, this is the biggest shot in the arm Logan Sport could possibly have.
More discussion among council? I'll make just a couple of points myself. When I became mayor on January 1st, 2012, this issue had been before the city for 20 years or so, going back to around 1992, I think, is when people could first predict and see this day coming. It was so serious at one time, Senator Weatherwax carried legislation in Indianapolis that supported wheeling. It would have allowed wheeling, which would have been a possible fix for us. It would have allowed us to go out on the market and buy low-cost electricity at any place from any supplier. That went away. The wheeling bill never came to fruition. In the meantime, we've slowly watched our asset get older and older and older, knowing that this day was coming. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to dump $100 million into a 100-year-old facility and expect for it to pay for itself without increasing, John Scamp's numbers, our electric rate by 95%. We knew it was coming. We already, our electric rate is already too high. We know that. We set out on a mission early on because it was a problem that we inherited. I appreciate all of you for your work in this. We didn't kick it down the road another election, or another term, or another 20 years. We didn't do that. We dealt with it, just like we've dealt with other things. You folks are in the middle right now of dealing with the pool. That's also been a headache to the city for the last 20 years. And I appreciate your courage in dealing with these things up front. You're not sidetracked by the naysayers. You know there's always going to be those. We're here to do a job. We don't always enjoy doing what we have to do, but we're doing it, and I admire you for that. Refuse-derived fuel comes in many forms. It doesn't mean it has to be trash. Don't think it will be. Refuse-derived fuel is a very broad term, but keep in mind, no matter what, if we get anything through to our friends in the media here tonight, the only thing that will be burnt at this plant is gas. Whether it's synthetic gas or natural gas, it's gas. One of the observations I made Monday night at the Utility Service Board from a citizen who spoke mentioned an opportunity that was before us, and she couldn't understand why we're not already producing electricity from the gas that's produced at the landfill at Oak Ridge out south of town. I didn't have the heart to tell her we've been doing it for 20 years. We've been producing gas in a very similar method. That's a natural method of producing gas. Ours is a method, a man-made method, but we're still producing electricity from gas. There's no difference. It's the same thing. There was a question tonight about a public works project, and oh my, what are we going to do in 25 years? Because we didn't build this as a public works project. My, how the tables have turned in a year. It was just about a year ago that we were in the Supreme Court because the same person complaining about us supporting a public works project sued us to stop us from doing a public works project. What a difference a year makes. An argument is an argument is an argument for the sake of an argument. I've said that all along, too. It wasn't that long ago, some of you may also remember, a statement in the Utility Service Board, and even here, that we could buy electricity for two cents. Two cents a kilowatt hour, it was said. And today, we have it locked down at 5.3 cents, but suddenly we have to have a feasibility study, a cost-of-service study, to tell us if we can do it for 5.3 cents. When we were encouraged to buy it for two cents, we know that didn't happen. You can't buy it for two cents. 5.3 cents is about as low as you're going to go, and we're really lucky to have found somebody that would help us put this together. And for that, I thank John Mulder for all of his efforts, and Brian Bosma, who's done an outstanding job. And along those lines, I would like to say that we've had a number of consultants, you've all met them over the years, over the last two years. You've met the attorneys, you've met the experts, you've met the players, the people who submitted proposals under our RFP. You all had the opportunity to meet those. Those people are the true experts. Those are the people that I would turn to if I needed advice on a subject. I don't care if it does cost 1.75 million.